Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council of Newmarket, New Hampshire. Wednesday, July 19th meeting. We're open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have two councilors who are not here. One is in excused absence, that's Counselor Finch. And the other, Counselor Burns is unable to attend this evening in person and is participating by telephone pursuant to state law. I must ask Counselor Burns why it was not reasonably practical for her to attend in person?
I'm in business meetings this week for my company in Bloomington, Indiana.
And is there any other person in the room with you?
No, there is none.
Okay. Welcome to the meeting, Counselor Burns.
Thank you.
And with that, I would like a motion to seal the minutes for the non-public session we just had. And also, apparently, we may have neglected to do that last meeting, for the second June meeting. So perhaps I could have a motion to seal both of those meetings in one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
And could I please have a motion to consider the June 21st regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any, or I guess to accept the meetings, are there any changes to those minutes? The only question, I have one item. It said on line 80 of the fourth page overall, it says something about a street court case. Should that be, is that really a street court case, or is it a Superior Court? I'll go to that. Okay. I'll go back to that. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I found it.
It come as a result of a street court case.
Which page?
I don't know that. It's page four overall, page two of the minutes. Code enforcement officer Mike Hoffman stated that the issue had come forward as a result of a street court case. And.
That doesn't make sense.
I can just strike it.
Yeah.
I'll just strike it.
Yeah, it should be a Superior's or Supreme Court. Anyway, it was a Supreme Court case.
That's what I, that's what I had thought, yeah.
Should I change it to Supreme?
Supreme.
If there are no other changes, I guess we can vote to approve the minutes for the June 21st.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Epstein.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to one.
And I'm going to go back to public forum in a minute, but we might as well finish non-public first. So could I have a motion to accept the June 21st non-public minutes?
So moved. Second.
Any comments or changes to be made to those? Please call the roll.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Bowden.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Epstein.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to one.
Okay. And something I should have done at the beginning is see if anybody here with comments for public forum?
I guess the question I have, Jim, is, is there any discussion on resolution to 1736? When it comes up, is that going to be a hard item? I know some resolutions that don't affect them at the first reading, and this is the second reading. Will there be any discussions on this resolution to authorize a commoners' rate? Will there be any discussion in that?
There'll be discussion.
Will you accept comments on that?
You're talking about?
From the public?
As I didn't see, I don't know, item seven, A, I.
Mr. Chair. If you mean from the public or from the council?
From the public or?
This is your, this would be the opportunity to comment on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let other people.
Hi, how are you? Good. I'm being concerned, I guess, oh, I'm Leo Colian, I've been a personal engineer for 60 years. I've been affiliated with the dam in Newmarket for 50 years, and I've been dealing with the dam bureau for 30 years, so I, and I'm also on the dam committee that's been going through this. My concern on this resolution and this expenditure, whatever, the whole basis that the dam bureau brought this section two is that all the designs and whatever will be based on the dam. I know people go on the dam, there's three gates there, and they open and close to raise the lower water levels and the flows. And the dam bureau has sort of steered everyone to the basis that they want all of these proposals to be based on the gates staying closed. I've been associated with this for a long time. In fact, 1950, when McAllen Company bought the mills and whatever, and they took out the turbines, electric turbines, and the McAllen Company used the gates since that time to raise, to let water out from spring runoffs and floods and everything. And basically, what is happening now is the dam bureau is asking these engineering proposals to base their recommendations on not opening the gates, even though the gates have been open for the last 66 years, whenever spring runoff or floods or whatever. And what it ends up doing, basically, if you study it with the gates closed, it reduces your amount of water going over the dam and into the bay by 2,000 cubic feet per second. And it raises the water level and the whole Lamprey by basically two feet. What this does is make a lot of property owners on the Lamprey River, and both in Newmarket and Durham, much more susceptible to flooding, and they would be required to buy flood insurance because of this increased rate and cost. And it also, by not allowing this 2,000 cubic feet per second to go over through the gates and into the bay, it pushes this 2,000 cubic feet per second across Mono Way and across Long Marsh Road. And that basically doubles the amount of water that's going over the Long Marsh Road. And this is a serious consideration for the rebuilding of Long Marsh Road in Durham. They have a federal grant for $795,000 to redo Long Marsh Road, but the Wetlands Board and whatever, to do that, they're talking about building up Long Marsh Road and allow the water to go underneath it. Well, the Wetlands Bureau has regulations that if they build up Long Marsh Road like they're proposing, it's going to increase the flooding on all Lamprey River in Newmarket, and that does not, does not allow them to do what they want to do. And I guess the fact that we've been allowing for the last 66 years, opening the gates, I just don't see rational health requiring the study to be done with the gates closed instead of the gates open like we've been doing for all these years. There is, besides requiring the walls to be two feet higher, there's a lot of studies, and I know a few people who've read the proposal here on the ZBA we're talking about. It makes a significant difference of what it's going to do, and I guess I just don't think that we should. And if there are reasons, I mean, weights for us, the dam bureau has made this decision, we can either ask for waivers, or we can ask for an appeal of the decision, and we can appeal it when it's not costing whatever. And I guess in going with this proposal on, based on not opening the gates, it'll be in Tom or Newmarket.
Thank you for your comment. At this point, it's time for the report of the.
Other comments.
Other comments, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Bodett of Grant Road, but I also ask the Newmarket Police Department as a police tenant, I normally wouldn't address the council. I'd normally be wearing a tie or my uniform, but I think it's important tonight that we are addressing the Newmarket Night Out, so we'll be brief. Karen and I catch you guys up this week, we were part of ASAP, are you guys familiar with ASAP? Substance abuse, yeah. So it's kind of a big thing that, while the town was experiencing an opioid epidemic as the state, as you see on the news, our coalition meets and has been doing it for a couple of years now, and they said, what can we do more to get our name in the community and do something to give back to the community? And someone had talked about National Night Out, which across the country, that would be the first Tuesday in August. And we kind of felt that doesn't really work for the parameters of Newmarket, we can do something better. And we thought of a better way to do it than to pick August 12th, which is our old weekend, what used to be our old one weekend. And right now, they have the Lamprey Healthcare 5K going on in the day, and then from 5:00 to 8:00, everyone at home listening, behind the field, the Land Rock Field. We're going to have some bands, and Karen can talk a little bit more, she's done a lot of work. I just kind of am there for moral support.
So, yeah, as he said, on August 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00, we'll have a lot of different activities. We're going to have two bands performing live music. One is the band 1612, which is a spinoff from The Vibe, which is a local youth, four youths in our community will be performing. They're very good. And then we have John Webb, who is bluegrass style, and he will be performing as well, and he currently performs at the Stone Church on different, at different times. We have the, we have a few different activities. One is Rye Airfield Bike Stunt Team will be there performing, and as well as the Extreme Air Jump Rope Team. And they will both be doing like a little meet period afterwards, just to kind of get the youth involved and to have something fun to do. We have raffles, prizes. One very exciting thing, we're going to have a 50/50 raffle, and it's a little twist on this raffle, is that at 6:30 PM, a helicopter will fly over the soccer fields and drop out golf balls, which will represent any 50/50 ticket purchased. And the golf ball that falls into the hole will win the 50/50 jackpot. So a little different, very exciting to have a helicopter flying over the town, which isn't something that normally happens. We also will be doing different activities, a lot of the youth groups in town are being involved as far as volunteers. And then on top of that, we will obviously have, the police department will have some of their special operation vehicles, as well as a motorcycle for photo op, and some other different cruisers, some things that people don't see every day. Fire department will also be there with the fire engines and ambulance and different activities, that people can see things that they don't normally get to see. The point of the night is to bring the community together with the fire department and the police department to build awareness on different crimes, on different potential illnesses that can result in addiction, which affects all of us in one way or another. So the point of the night is to bring everyone together. So we have all these great activities going on, everyone having a different thing to look at or to do, and just, you know, have some community feel throughout the evening. There will also be about roughly 20 information vendors there, from anywhere from the local hospitals to support groups, to education awareness, and different opportunities for them to help spread the word and help people that might have questions or would like to educate themselves.
Yeah, and I think the thing I'm happiest about, growing up in this community and now raising my family in the community, I think what we've been finding out battling this opioid addiction is we nearly need to get back in contact with our kids. I think our kids, our youth are aware, our future lies to get healthy, and I think Karen and I have done a great job of fostering that type of relationship with the school. We have SALT, which is a student athlete team, student athletic.
Leadership.
Leadership team. So they're going to be there to do some stuff. Then we have people from the Student Council and National Honor Society. We just, and the band is from the school, and they have a huge following within the school. Something needs a lot to me to say, we're bridging that gap with our youth, and let's be honest, if we can get the kids to come to this event, the parents will follow because they're going to be interested. And we also want to mention too, it's really all Newmarket-based things that we did. All the restaurants in town said that in some shape or form, they'll be there to provide people something to eat, we have some other things going on. So I'm just excited that hopefully this can morph into something bigger next year. While just starting from a talk about National Night Out, which was to break down the barriers, like she said, across the country, to see police in different light, to talk about things that are going on in your community and things that, you know, we need to address. And we're a small community, we should be doing that. We're not the size of Chicago. I think it'd be easy. So I'm proud to get this done. So I guess this is an infomercial.
Very good one.
Yeah. Let's recap. I'm sorry.
Yeah, August 12th, and 5:00 to 8:00, just three hours. And maybe next year, if we see the interest, we'll talk about maybe extending it out, maybe making it something longer.
Where's it taken place?
Oh, at the Leo Land Rock Field up behind the high school. Parking-wise, the stage is there. It was a great setup for us, and I can say that the rec, Amy Gigante has been working great with us, helping us to logistically lay this out. And just starting what we did in April, to pull something off for August, we were really tasked with trying to make sure this worked.
So, yeah, just to recap, August 12th, 5:00 to 8:00. We'll have t-shirts, clearly. Raffles will be sold prior to the event and at the event, and so we just hope to see everyone there, parents, grandparents, kids, anyone who lives in town or out of town. But it's a great way to support the fire department and the police department for all the work they do, and bring our community together. Thanks.
So, obviously, it's a free event?
Yes, free admission.
Does this will bring, are these t-shirts for sale?
Yes, t-shirts will be $5. There are some, with a 50/50 raffle, it's one ticket for $10 and three tickets for $20 per chances. And restaurants will be selling their food at a very low price. So they'll have one or two of their signature showcase items, but to help the restaurants as well, again, local event, wants to make sure they get their, their great food out there as well.
Are you looking for any, are you still looking for raffle items or anything like that?
We'd be happy to take anything that anyone would like to donate. We have had very generous support from local businesses, even seacoast businesses would be the raffle items with monetary donations as well.
Thank you, sounds like a great program.
Great, we'll hope to see you guys all then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we're ready for the report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On my handwritten report this evening, you all should have received an email from me with the build-out plan for the wastewater and water that we can conduct in this past year. It's about a hundred-page document, and, but they will be at the next meeting to present it to the council. Not the entire hundred-page document, so don't have to worry about it. Just wanted the council to be aware of that. In my written report, the town of Newmarket, as most towns do, has an emergency operations plan. Purpose of this plan is to address the response to consequences of any disaster or emergency in town. This includes natural disasters, hazardous materials, man-made incidents, terrorism, power failures, and national emergencies, and we should be updating this periodically. As the Emergency Management Director, I'm working with the chiefs and the consultant who previously worked for the town writing the plan to update our current one. We're applying for a grant from the Bureau of Homeland Security Emergency Management to cover half the cost. The town's contributions can be made within kind services of our time, which is probably going to easily make up that difference. Total cost of project is $8,000, with, in the $4,000 will be coming through the grant. Again, also on my handwritten report, I do want to let everyone know that we did receive the grant for the tactical gear for the EMTs. So we just, we notified that late last week. The next item is also, as we previously mentioned, we're working on converting all the streetlights in town over to LED lighting. These are brighter and more energy efficient. We've been in contact with ever source to help fund the streetlights replacement. However, we were notified that they will not have funds to do so until calendar year 2018. And when I say the streetlights, I mean what we refer to as Cobra headlighting, the ones that hang over the streets. We are currently working with the Community Development Finance Authority to provide funding to replace all our decorative lighting in the downtown with LED lighting. Director Public Works and Affinity Lighting of Dover are currently working on a price to replace all of it. As soon as that is available, we'll submit the number to CDFA to assist with the funding. What they'll do is they'll provide us with a low-interest loan. They have, it's specifically for energy, and in return, the savings that we have from the switching over to LED, that's how we pay the loan back. Their estimate would be about a two-year payback, so it wouldn't be that long.
So, and just to clarify, that's just for the decorative?
Just for decorative.
The others will wait till 2018.
Right. And I think people don't understand, when I say decorative, it's not just the ones on Main Street, we have them on Elm Street, we have them on Route 108, Exeter Road, we have them in the parking lots. So there's a significant number of the decorative ones that we can switch over. The difference between the two is that the Cobra headlighting is on a set rate, it's not, it's not an hourly rate like most people's homes are, a kilowatt hour. That's why we actually encourage everybody, if you see a light out, report it, because we're paying for it whether or not it's on or off. So, but the decorative ones, we do have to pay on a kilowatt basis, so that's why it's two separate programs. So that's, that's why we're trying to get that one done first. And if you remember, that was also part of the downtown pedestrian improvement project that we had to cut due to funding. So we hopefully will be able to do it through that. The next item on my written report is, as part of the state of New Hampshire's budget, the state has introduced keno gambling as a revenue source. After reviewing the bill, if the town council wishes, it may place the question on the ballot in March to allow keno in town. This is different than most other items, as it results, that the legislative body does not get to approve this. It actually has to go to the voters. And just one of the things is only in establishments with a valid liquor license are allowed to have keno. Since the town council will have to decide whether or not to place the question on the ballot, I would propose a resolution during a future meeting, and I just attached a copy of the legislation to the, to the report. So basically, what you're going to have is in November, the 13 cities will probably have it on their ballot to approve or not approve keno gambling in their communities. And if towns go forward with it, it would be next March. There is another way to do it, that I believe it's 5% of the registered voters could sign a petition to put it on the ballot, and it's probably just easier just to put it on the ballot and get it over with one way or the other, so.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Weinstein, yeah.
I'm just curious if you've had any feedback from the community about this yet? I mean, I think it's still pretty new.
Yeah.
But I'm curious if there's been any.
I heard from the, one of our members of our legislative delegation, Representative Cahill, who wasn't in favor of it as part of the budget process. Other than that, just general comments, sort of like, you know, it could help some of the social clubs in the community, which are losing membership, that if they allowed it, it could help their business. Other than that, no, not really.
No other business owners have approached you?
No. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chair.
I had one other question. Around the situation with the crosswalks, and I was saw, I guess, I can recall whether it was in your report, there was an email that said that it was, it looked like it'd been satisfactorily resolved, the.
Oh, the downtown?
Yes.
Yeah, Target Construction was in, I want to say two, three weeks ago. They rebuilt basically all the crosswalks. The big one in front of the Big Bean area, they went in, they determined that the water was not getting through the cement, even though there were weep holes, the cement was being filled with sand. So they added additional weep holes, as well as putting a textile above that so sand and other things could not get in there, but water could. It seems to have been working, we've had a number of torrential rains that seem to have been the problem in the past, that had the issue, and all the crosswalks seem to be holding up from that. The next step is this, pavement marking company will be coming in to do that. That's a good question, when that's going to happen, because it's just, it's this time to do it, and we're just in the hopper to get it done. So it could be sometime late August, early September.
And is there any, will we have recourse? I mean, I appreciate, so they, I think you answered the question I sort of had, which was, do we understand what the problem was before, what, why it, why it didn't function better when it was first put in?
Yeah, there wasn't enough weep holes, because underneath every one of the crosswalks is a, I'm trying to remember the number of feet of cement, two or three, and they put weep holes in it so the water can get through. There wasn't enough, and there were being, the sand was getting filled. So they looked at it again, the engineers re-engineered it and put the textile in it. As for recourse, that's a larger discussion once the project is over.
Yeah. Would we, I mean, if it hap, if it turns out that this is just a late, and the problem started to recur in six months?
Yeah, no, they'll come back and fix it, or we'll.
We're still, okay.
Yeah, they're still monitoring it.
Okay. Counselor Thompson.
Just a quick question on the building of Shanda Park. There was some note, somewhere, has that been blocked off?
I believe it has, but I'll double-check. Saw some emails this weekend.
Yeah, it was something, so I know that was tentatively being, being looked at, just so somebody doesn't get too close to that wall with everything that goes on at this time of the year.
Seen some fencing blocking it off.
Yeah. So then you get to it, yeah.
Okay. I wasn't taking it as the boat launch was blocked in, you couldn't get down Water Street, it's just, yeah, okay.
No other comments? Any committee reports? Counselor Cast.
Hi, this is.
Oh, Counselor.
I have a report, but you can let me know when you're ready to go.
Go now.
Okay. Thank you. So Counselor Cast and I both attended the last planning board meeting, and I do not have my notes here, but I will give, maybe I can give just a high-level overview and then put, maybe Counselor Cast can fill in any gaps that I might miss. then put maybe Councilor Cast to fill in any gaps that I might miss there. But, so we did have a presentation or a review from the Stafford Regional Planning Commission regarding the stormwater regulation, just an update from them. And then the City Property Management was also there, and they were asking for an extension on a site plan and special use permit, which was granted. And then finally, there was a public hearing for an application for a subdivision at Eagle Drive, and that, and Councilor Cast, we did approve that, if my memory serves me correct.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right, good. And that is my planning board report, unless Councilor Cast has anything to add.
No, that was everything.
Thank you.
Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we will move on to resolutions and ordinances in the second reading, and the first of those is Resolution 2016-17-36. Read this whole thing, you think, Steve?
Yeah, just the title.
Just the title?
Yeah.
Okay. Authorizing the town administrator to enter into an agreement with GZA Geo-Environmental Incorporated to conduct a stability analysis and design conceptual plans for abutment walls for the McAllen Dam. Okay. Motion, second. Motion, second, please.
So moved.
Second.
I'd ask the Director of Community Development to just give a brief overview of the project and where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, certainly pleasure here this evening. I'm here this evening with Bill Archery, the chairman of the McAllen Dam Committee, and we are here on behalf of the committee recommending that the town council approve the resolution before you tonight to authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract with GZA Geo-Environmental Consultants in the amount of $47,000 to complete engineering related to the next phase of the McAllen Dam project. I'd like to give a brief overview of the process for the benefit of some of the new council members, and also for the benefit of the public. We've been working long and hard on this project since 2010 or so, and just to give you some background, McAllen Dam was purchased, was conveyed to the town of New Market in 2004, was previously owned by Essex Corporation. And it was a dam that comes under the jurisdiction of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, who periodically inspects the dams in the state, and did so in 2008 and 2010. As a result of their inspection, there was a letter of deficiency sent to the town, asking the town to address certain deficiencies that were found, and the town hired an engineering firm at the time to do a structural analysis, hydraulic analysis, and a breach analysis. And one of the most challenging requirements under the letter of deficiency is to increase the design capacity of the dam to meet the 100-year flood requirement. The dam is a high-hazard dam under state requirements, and the dam currently doesn't have sufficient hydraulic capacity to safely pass the 100-year flood with one foot of freeboard, which is a DES requirement, and I won't go into the details. As part of the early work that was done, it was estimated that it would cost between 1.1 million and 4.6 million to increase the design capacity, and there were a number of alternatives that were looked at, and there would be some additional costs associated with structural issues. Simultaneously with this process, and it was actually triggered by the flooding in 2006 and 2007, there was a parallel effort in town. A group of citizens presented a petition to the town council and town meeting to raise funds, looking at the feasibility of removing the dam as a solution to the town's flooding problems. As a result of that, the town hired another consultant to look at that, and through an extensive public process, it was determined that there really wasn't overwhelming public support for the option of removal of the dam, and that it really wasn't the correct course for the town to pursue. And following the completion of the study, there's really a shift in public policy, if you will, rather than focusing on removal of the dam, focusing on repairing the dam. And in late 2014, the town council set up a McAllen Dam Study Committee to look at alternatives in a broader sense, and Mr. Archery is our current chairman, we have some, two distinguished guests from the committee here, Chairman Pike, who's one of our members, as well as Mr. Philion, who spoke earlier this evening. What I wanted to point out, that over the last three years, this committee has worked very hard to gain a better understanding of the complexity of the dam and its riverine system, and the regulatory climate in which we need to operate in order to address this. We have been working collaboratively with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services since the beginning of this process. They've attended several meetings of the dam committee, and have provided counsel and advice and positive direction to the town at every step in the way. In 2015, the committee put together a request for proposals and to look at the next step, and at the time, there was a lot of confusion about whether the town would have to do a complete analysis of the stability analysis of the entire dam, or whether we could just focus on a more detailed approach that may save costs of the dam. As a result, we received three very different proposals. The committee decided to address some of the hydraulic issues that came up as part of their process, but we also wanted to work, again, collaboratively with DES, to get a better understanding of what their requirements would be. We ended up hiring Gomez Sullivan to do some final hydraulic analysis, which actually identified what the flow requirements would be to meet that design capacity. And we now have a model that's been accepted by DES, and it has been updated with new information from the Long March Road project that Mr. Philion was referring to, as well as work that has been done by the state on Route 108. Through this process, we decided to go forward with a revised scope of services, and go back to the initial engineers that came forward with proposals to find out, to get a more clear understanding of what the cost would be. And with this time, the focus, it was felt by the committee that the focus really should be on raising the abutment walls on the other side of the dam as a solution. I think that was, in the end, we all concur that that would be the most feasible approach, but we needed further engineering guidance to be able to evaluate that. So, we redid the RFP, and the three firms provided proposals, and GZA was the lowest bidder. They came in with a proposal at $47,000. And Mr. Jim Guaranti, who is the senior project manager from GZA, is here this evening. I know you all received a copy of the proposal, the RFP, as well as the contract, which has been reviewed by legal counsel, and I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and clarify the situation. And we do hope that tonight we can move forward with the project, so that we can further our evaluation of the options. Thank you very much.
Councilor Thompson?
Could someone address the public comments from Mr. Philion regarding not only the engineering study being done, only considering the gates closed, but also tell me, are they doing that only for the purpose of the study, and the gates will continue to be operational as they have been?
Yeah, I'll let Bill make further comments, but I can say that this is only for the purpose of setting the heights of the abutment walls. It would not affect future operations, so the gates would continue to be operated. The question is, can you calculate that the flow over the dam, over or through the dam, with the gates open, even though you intend to do so, or are you required to make your calculation as if, you know, say you can't get access to the gates, or you can't?
So, it's a worst-case scenario-type thing. Does that, does that result in then, the abutments having to be higher, let's say, than they would actually need to be in some level of overengineering?
Yes, I think that there is an impact on the height of the walls. Now, there's also, and I probably should let Bill say this, but I will say that, as Diana said, we have had a very collaborative conversations with DES. So, there are things that initially looked like it would be expected to do and hard to do, that we're not required to do anymore, such as the stability analysis of the main spillway itself, so.
So, for them to just do the study, the cost of what we need to approve tonight, I mean, yes, there's a scope here, too, but nailing it down, the cost of the study by GZA would be the same whether the gates were open or closed. They need to do the study, or are we including a potential cost for raising an abutment, picking a number, 10 feet higher than it needs to be, you know, maybe, because they're only considering the gates being closed?
Let me, let me just, I'll let Bill, I think, go ahead.
I didn't want to just call anybody up.
Yeah.
Not my job.
Mr. Chair, I'll try to clarify it. There is a piece of this study that has to look at automating the gate structure.
Right.
Where also, they may look at other ways to deal with the gate system. Maybe, you know, through the automation of this gate structure, we may be able to convince DES that, you know, it's efficient, it's not really operational, it doesn't require human intervention to make it work, which is the issue they are concerned of. So, we're hoping that we might be able to get there, and it depends on the engineering analysis and such, so that, you know, we can convince DES. Leo raises some good points, and we all agree that it's all too conservative not to include the gates, the flow through the gates. So, we're hoping maybe we can make a technical argument, and if the technical argument doesn't work, we have the option of making a legal appeal for water, at least as counsel. So, we may be back here discussing that, if we want to.
Is that more in the construction phase, again, you know, if the cost is $47,000 to do the study, gates open, gates closed, whatever? I mean, there's two pieces that come together under this.
I don't think it changes.
Construction-wise, that to me would be different. So, let's say they're going to pick a number, and they say, okay, with the gates closed, to calculate, to your point, they're going to calculate the water with the gates closed, and we need to raise the abutments 10 feet, picking numbers. But there's got to be a way to say, okay, with the gates open, here's the flow rate, we need to be at the, and then, and prorate it. I mean, there's mathematical formulas all over the place, saying, okay, the gates are open twice a year, so that's going to drop something, 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 and something at the worst times, so that the abutments only need to go up seven and a half feet instead of 10. Again, just picking numbers. Those are the things that I would like to know. I'm just not entirely concerned, convinced that that is what we're voting on tonight, but I do appreciate it being addressed.
Yeah, it would be nice if we had the clarity now, you know, we had permission to use the gate opening, but we don't think it holds up the study, and we need to hold up the study in order to get there. It might help.
Okay.
And Jim, I'll collect this to you, I don't think it changes the scope of this study.
The $47,000 is actually a combination.
Have to be up by the line.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's 35 plus options, I guess.
My name's Jim Guaranti, I work for GZA Geo-Environmental, and the $47,000 that's part of the overall cost for this proposal includes $35,000 dedicated to do the study and the alternatives analysis to address the issue that the board, DES, has with respect to having to raise the abutments to be able to pass the recently agreed-upon 100-year flood. And per regulation, we have to assess that and perform that study with the gates closed. It's a very conservative assumption, but those are the regulations. The dam bureau takes the conservative approach, that they want the dam to be able to pass the design storm of record with one foot of freeboard without any human interaction. So, the fact that you've been opening and closing these gates for 66 years, or however many years, is a great thing, but conservatively taken, the dam bureau doesn't necessarily care about that. So, that's why we have to do the study that we have to do, and that's with $35,000 base. You'll see in the proposal that there's like $12,000 worth of extras. One of those extras is an evaluation of potentially modifying the gates, automating the gates, so that they can automatically be opened when the water level rises to a certain level, without any human interaction.
Which gets to what Mr. Philion is getting to, that we can then consider the gates being partially open.
Yes, if there's no human interaction, or unless, Mr. Philion said, you got a waiver from the dam bureau, but that's a different path, appealing to the board. And so, if you are able to alter the gates, modify the gates, put in different types of gates, such that they will automatically spill, or allow for more spilling, because the water's going over the center of the dam, too, but if they automatically open without any human interaction, then you would be able to count the capacity that they're able to pass in your equations, in your analysis. And so, that might, or that would, lower the height of the abutments, the rate, the height that you need to raise the abutments. I hope that clarifies some of the issues.
Thank you.
And so, well, back to the, the $35,000 is the base scope. If we are authorized by the city, the town, after maybe, you know, the first parts of the evaluation, we meet with the dam bureau, and we get into the meat of the analysis, we may or may not lead down that path. And I believe that item in there is like a $4,000 item, because there's two other items that potentially may or may not need to be done.
Okay.
$4,000.
Yeah.
Constumalizing?
I'm just curious about timeframes. So, if we were to approve this resolution tonight, what's the timeframe that we're looking at for the study to be completed?
The contract says November 30th, and the goal here is to get some hard data, so that as you go through your budget process, then Steve can put together some budget proposals for the town council and the CIB committee to consider, and hopefully make some recommendations for town meeting warrant to move to the next step. It's not necessarily going to be construction as the next step, the final engineering design. So, that's our goal. We want to try to get some information. It may be that the public process might extend into January or February, but the goal is to get as much information out there by March, so that the voters can make a informed decision on any, you know, bond issues that may be the result of this study. Everyone, come, please.
Rules out, council has to suspend the rules, in order to let members of the public speak.
The comment I'd like to make is?
It would require, is the will of the council that we suspend the rules and let Mr. Philion speak further?
That's fine.
A motion to do so?
That's fine. So moved.
Motion by Council Thompson, second by Council Bowden. Any discussion?
Any discussion? Just call a roll.
Council Burns?
Aye.
Council Thompson?
Aye.
Council Cast?
Aye.
Council Bowden?
Aye.
Council Weinstein?
Aye.
Council Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
The comment I'd like to make is, basically, if you look at the proposal, after you people approve this, there's going to be a meeting between ZBA, the dam committee, and whatever, to flesh out all the parts of this proposal, and some, and we determine what the next steps will be. But there's several steps in here, some are kind of black and white, others are determining whatever. And I think basically, once this meeting occurs, once you people approve this, there will be a meeting of the minds of what the next step should be. Is that, you're reading, basically, as soon as you people approve? Because that, you're reading, basically, if the stories you people approve this, dam committee, ZBA, and whatever, plus other people on the committee, are going to get together, flesh out this proposal, and see which is going to have priority first. Is that my understanding of it?
It's going to be three meetings with the McAllen Dam Committee, and DES, and the consultant to help crystallize this plan, so that we have consensus and we move forward.
And the first one is...
Just remind everybody they need to be on mic if they're going to speak, because we're on television.
You have to be on mic.
Okay. Any further comments from the council? Let's call a roll.
Council Burns.
Aye.
Council Thompson.
Aye.
Council Cast.
Aye.
Council Bowden.
Aye.
Council Weinstein.
Aye.
Council Pike.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for coming. All right. One second, please. I'll just read the title on this. Resolution 201617-37, resolution authorizing the town administrator to enter into a three-year agreement with First Light for hosted PBX telephone system services. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm going to ask the director of facilities and the director of information technology to give a brief on this. Thank you.
Good evening. Earlier this year, we started noticing our phone system was having some issues. It's at least 10 years old. I believe it's closer to 12, maybe 13 years old. Some of the failures have been frustrating, but livable. Some of them have been unlivable, where a phone doesn't come back online, it's just dead. I can no longer buy the equipment for this phone system. So, I started watching the phone system steadily degrade, if you will. I then went out into our current vendor and said, can you give me an upgrade? What is there out there for an upgrade? Well, you could do this, you could do this, you could do this. The more and more we look at things, I think, the more and more we realize, when we're talking about efficiencies, the real efficiency is realized when the system is simplified, it's available to as many people as possible, and that to me generally means it's cloud-based. I did not go looking for First Light, oddly enough. I went around and I asked area towns. I talked to Exeter, Dover, Portsmouth, and said, what do you guys do? Exeter, Durham, and Dover were already on the First Light hosted system. So that gave me a good feeling to say, how's it going? How many outages have you had? What are the pitfalls you walk into, that sort of thing? Portsmouth was just starting, and Somersworth was just starting here for their police department. Talked to a few other companies that were running it. Everybody was very comfortable with it, the outages had been very, very small. It just, again, seemed like, seemed like one of those things that we should move forward on, obviously with the phone system failing. The fear of the phone system failing is not so much that maybe we can't take a call here, it's that, what if we can't take a call with the police department or something? Or what if we can't complete a call from the fire department, or the ambulance, or something like that? That's where you really start to, start to get a little nervous about things. So we wanted to, a few goals, we want to keep it really simple, we want to keep it cost-effective. By being able to utilize most of the networking gear that we have right now on site, we don't have to do a whole rip and replace, it's more of just an upgrade. We want a lot of good uptime, obviously, excellent tech support. We've used Bayring and First Light for our phone service for 10 years, I think since I've been here. And about a year and a half ago, we had an outage for the police department at 2:00 AM, I got called at home, they could not take calls. We were routing 911 calls over to Durham, and then they were rating them into us, which is standard when you have an outage of that effect. I came in and could not figure out what was going on with the phone lines, so I called Bayring at 2:00 AM in the morning, and had said, you know, if nobody is available, obviously, leave a number, and somebody will call you back. This should be interesting. Somebody called me back in 10 minutes, said, what are the phone lines that are in trouble? I gave her the numbers, she called me back 20 minutes later and said, I fixed it, here's the issue, what you want to do when you come in later on in the morning is you want to do this, this, and this, to resolve it permanently. That kind of tech support, I have to tell you, is just about priceless. Rather than, here's your ticket number, we'll call you when you're open in the morning. We then, when Greg came on board, we said, let's sit down and look at this and see, is there a way to merge this with what the school has? Is there a way to build upon and integrate, and again, you know, expand that efficiency? And if there is a way to do that down the road, and we've, I guess that's it, I will stop talking. And not let Greg make any points, see what he needs to make. Doug said I was new to the system, and I was asked to take a look at the whole package. So what I did is I went through everything that was submitted on the original RFP that I had created, took all that information, and then reviewed what would be the best financial decision for the community, plus taxpayers spending on cash outlay. Also had several questions for the Call It A Little Company, such as some of their terms and conditions. So I asked them to provide us with pretty detailed terms and conditions, also asked them to come meet with me, and list the questions I wanted to have answered, Doug was also with us. And from what I get, I gleaned from everything that Doug had done, it appears, based on the information that was gathered and the contracts, that Bayring was the best option. It doesn't require a cash outlay for the system in place, whereas the other respondents require a cash outlay. This is a program that really is going to allow us to keep the same cost basis that we're paying now. We may be able to reduce it through some other measures that we're looking at, but you're not paying $20,000 to $30,000 upfront fees, and then having to pay for the service on top of that. It is an inclusive service, so if we have a phone that breaks, we can buy us a new one. There's no charge for that phone. There it is. So in the long run, you look at all of those things, and the cost for the community appears to be much better. We're not increasing what we're currently paying out, or, and we're also looking at being able to potentially reduce some of our line costs, or whatever we refer to as POX lines, so that we can continue to drop that cost overall for the community. So it really came out as one of the best options that we could want through the process.
Councilor Bowden.
Okay. Thank you for sending the information along, including the responses that came back. I think there are, I mean, I'm all about cloud. This is, it's what I do, it's what my company does. It's, love it, live it, it's how we're communicating with Amy Burns in Indiana right now, so. Indiana, correct? So, looking at the differences, I think it's pretty clear that two are premise-based solutions, RTM and Force3, who I've never heard of, surprisingly, but it's their premise-based solutions provider. If, and I have nothing against Bayring, First Light, I have customers that use Bayring, First Light, I sell Bayring, First Light. So I, I know their solution for their data, the network. It's not, I'm not questioning that, what I'm questioning is rubbing these, rubbing First Light against, there's two different technologies, there's a cloud, where everything is stored in a cloud, everything goes through the internet, you get your calls routed, you can have your DID ring to your cell phone, it can ring to that, you can ring to my Surface Pro at my desk on the street, which is the beauty of it. So it's, it's pretty foolproof. I guess what I'm, what I would like to see is a comparison against two other hosted providers, because you're comparing apples and oranges here. You're not comparing the same thing, if, does anybody understand that? One of the systems, or two of the quotes here are for keeping all the boxes on-premise. Someone has, technician has to come out, they have to program, they have to fix their desk, or they have to reprogram a phone, put on that person's desk, put on that person's desk. With the hosted solution, you can pick up a phone, you can bring it to your house, well, depends on the firewall that you have, but depending what, how it's set up, you can bring it basically to any office. So I guess my question is, why wasn't this...
Three cloud-based?
Why wasn't it quoted with three, or two other hosted, cloud-based solutions? And then, and then I can ask the questions as far as the differences between the systems, the phone replacements, the type of phones, the software, the soft switches that they use. So I mean, there's just, there's different, different things that go along with that. I'm not trying to be someone to hold up the process, but I think it's important to look at three of the same things. You're looking at a Ford Cruiser, you're looking at a Chevy Caprice, you're looking at a Buick, whatever it is, for a police car. Right now, we're looking at an airplane, and we're looking at two buses.
I see the point, but in effect, we're looking at three phone systems. One is hosted, the other is on-site. What we looked at was a replacement, or an upgrade, if you will, to the current phone system. One came back, said, we don't really do the hardware anymore, it's just, you know, really not worth it to host all your own hardware, it's a lot of extra effort. We're doing all hosted. And again, I didn't go looking for Bayring slash First Light. I went and I asked area towns, I said, what are you doing? Because the amount of cash outlay for the capital expense upfront is big. The two hosts we're looking at doesn't even include new phones, so add an extra $20,000 or whatever for new phones. So the cash outlay upfront is gigantic.
Absolutely.
I, to me, when I, when I ask area municipalities, and I say, what are you running in your police departments, what are you running in your fire departments, what are you running, you know, for EMS and that sort of stuff? If that's what they're running, and it works, and they haven't had any outages, that makes me really comfortable. And when a company at 2:00 in the morning takes my call, and jumps on that problem, that really counts for something. And I see your point, saying we're comparing apples to oranges, but I feel like we're not. I feel like we're comparing three phone systems. They're just different, if you will. But it's like the Chevy, it's like the Chevy, the Caprice, and the Ford, if you will. They're all Cruisers, but they're all different to an extent. Not hugely so, but they are different. There is going to be a Ford or a Caprice.
Actually, I didn't press my button. Sorry.
Council Thompson.
I, that was basically my question. I get that we would want to have a cost for replacing the existing system, and do it, and have it here, but I, too, was wondering why we only got one bid from a cloud.
We got, I got very few responses when I initially put dealers out there. I got one, and it was from Force3, who, I don't know if they started on the internet, or how they got it, because they're actually based out of, I think, Washington DC, but are actually doing a project up here in New Hampshire, I believe, for the state police. So it was a little interesting, he said, you know, we do do things in New Hampshire. So I said, okay.
If we were to do apples to apples to apples, as opposed to RTM and Force3, if we compared First Light as a cloud-based to two other cloud-based companies, that's, that, too, is what I...
I agree. And again, when I, when I put the RFP out there, I didn't get responses from other cloud-based VoIP providers. So, at some point, you take...
There's the answer. It was requested, but they didn't respond.
And then again, I even went to the school and looked at their solution, because I felt like, I'm not getting a big response here. Any of the First Light didn't respond. I found them by talking to municipalities. So I don't know, I just said, dead zone, sometimes you put an RFP out there, the economy's really good, everybody's really busy, nobody answers, it seems like.
My only other question is probably to the town administrator. It mentions, we're basically the same cost per month, within 20 bucks or something like that. But it also mentions a dollar saving from Comcast fees, and a dollar saving from Fairpoint fees. Do you have an estimate on how much those fees?
The Fairpoint, the Comcast fee is about $130 a month, the Fairpoint fee is $375 a month. This will, Greg and I, in the initial dig, looked at this, and I think, I want to say, I think we have about 40, what we call POX lines, which are telephone service lines. And we looked at those, and we said, wow, do we really need 40, of course, you know, not to a wire. And when you go to this hosted solution, it's a lot easier to virtualize those lines. When you begin looking at that, saying, we could, we could whack 10 of these, real easy. There's another $300 a month. It will come in less than what we're paying currently.
That's what I'm saying, is we're, we're saving somewhere between $400 and $600.
Yeah, you're having ultimate savings over what you're currently...
Which isn't major, but I mean, that's...
Right. It's interesting, because my former community, we went through this exact same exercise. And cloud-based, and we did a school and a town, and we had the same questions. And the interesting part is, the town went with a cloud-based, and the school went with a server-based one, on-site. The town had almost no problems. School, on the other hand, had nothing but problems. Two different vendors.
Premise.
What's that?
Premise-based. With premise-based?
Yes, on-site. Yes. The interesting part was that, when it came down to it, it was two different vendors. Some came down to responsiveness to service points. One of the biggest issues we ran into was on our, where we hosted inside, basically we had our own premise. We ended up having to change about 90 phone sets, because the original ones did not work well with their system. So we ended up changing from one of their original specs that they had sent in to us. It's, it's an interesting thing. I'm 100% with cloud at this point, you know, I was kind of on the fence when we went through that exercise, but I think cloud-based system is just about the only way to go.
I have a question from Council Burns.
Hi, thank you. I don't really have a question, but I did have a comment, just regarding, I just wanted to get in there. And I totally understand getting the three different quote sense comparisons, and I think that's reasonable, but I also understand what is being said in regard to what I keep, what I think I'm hearing is that the other towns are using this, and they're very happy with this system. And I just want to let the rest of the council know that with my company here, we're on our third phone system this year, of this same type of system that we're talking about, because we went through other systems, and they had just a lot of work. So I think it's kind of a big thing, that if, if there's recommendations on this type of system, or this particular company from other towns that is working well, that's kind of a big thing, that I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
I have a procedural question, actually. Council Burns, can you hear everybody?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all enunciating and speaking up loudly enough, so you can hear everything.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
The only time I couldn't really hear was when Mr. Philian walked away, so we...
Okay.
Council Bowden.
Just going to say that RTM43, First Light, you know, I guess, I'll just reiterate, I like Bayring, I have nothing against them, First Light.
I guess I wish I had known. I could have given you names of other companies to rub up against Firstlight, and Firstlight very well may have come in the winner. I'm very surprised that there weren't others that came in. There are so many, as Ava mentioned, going through two different systems prior to the one that she's on now, and the company that she's with now is, is very good as well. Yeah, and that's... If my question, common concern is looking at and quoting three cloud-based solution providers.
Councilor Cast?
I don't know a lot about telephone systems, except I know that my cellphone can have problems that a landline doesn't. So I'm wondering, do you, can you speak to the reliability of a cloud-based architecture versus on-premise? Not in regard to responding to emergencies that, you know, you brought up at the beginning, and just having that reliability on a day-to-day basis. But what about in more drastic situations? You know, how reliable is cloud versus on-premise?
The nice part about the cloud solution that Firstlight slash Bayring offers, and we talk Bayring, Firstlight, it's the same company, so we throw the names around, we don't change it. The nice thing about their solution is they have, they have a redundant system. So if for some reason we lose that link to the PoCS office, it jumps over to the office where the backup system is. And it's very, very quick. It's like a one-second, "Oh, the phone's been registered, the backup is right." So you have that redundancy built in, which is nice and even better than emergency. At our current police department, we bring in a bunch of copper lines off the telephone pole, because we think copper lines are very stable, they're very, you know, like you said, landlines. And that's, that's fine. But what happens the day when somebody clips that telephone pole? And those copper lines get ripped down. They were nice, and they were stable. And they are generally nice, and they are stable. But anything, anything can happen, really, honestly. So the stability that I've heard from Exeter, Durham, and Dover, they said they had had no outages in two years, so.
Do you know if the... Can I ask one more question about that? Does the contractual relationship guarantee some kind of level of service in that regard?
It actually does. There's, one thing that I got, that I wanted to have, is those terms and conditions. And it spells out how quickly they have to respond, 24 hours response. 24 hours response, in other words, you can call 2 AM, and they will respond, they have someone on call at all times. I think that's a very important piece, too. And also, I 100% agree that that's, that's an issue. It, it's funny, because I think you find most things are going cloud-based, and not necessarily people realize it anymore. For instance, how many people have a landline at their house now? Or do you care if you have a cellphone? I haven't had a landline in my house for five years. And I actually worked for a phone company at one point. So the only reason I had a landline then is because, well, I worked for a phone company. But I, I can tell you from experience with what we did in my former life, as I like to call it now, we really did have issues. It was an excellent, excellent system. Now, I will also tell you that the one that was on-site, our own hosted system, that we hosted ourselves, we had not only those problems, but we didn't have a generated backup. So once power went away, which did happen, we had no system. Whereas in some of these hosted systems, you're still, you're still at levels of communications depending on your system, and so on and so forth. They'll generate backup with, if you're doing it on-site. So it's things like that you have to look at. And I would say, Councilor Bowden's marked, and he loves cloud-based, and I, that's where everything is moving to. It is just the way, the way everyone's moving. We also were, as part of this, is to allow us to increase actual connection rates so that we actually can roll with the system too. So this is not a system that's stagnated here. It's allowing us to grow as we increase, you know, dates of meeting, things like that, as we go forward. So it's a, it's a very good system for us. It has a lot of new features overall for us. It's very user-friendly. I know IT departments are, love to have, to have, deal with phone issues all day long. And want it, want it done. They want to be able to pick up the phone before getting over here and goes.
I'm going to go with the town administrator next.
I just want to follow up with the, any type of outage, because I mean, our biggest concerns with an outage is dispatch. And while they're, you know, we have certain agreements in the contract, I'm not going to say there aren't going to be situations where dispatch is down. I mean, there are natural disasters or man-made disasters, as we mentioned earlier, that we have to plan for. That dispatch would be diverted somewhere else and would be radioed into the community for time being. When I was in Epping, there was a period of time when Verizon, at that point in time, was down because of flooding in a switch station. So the community was without phones for almost a week. But we were able to do it by having backups into our emergency management plans. So I do want to, I do want to make sure that we understand that outage is on this level, is not a natural disaster. It's an outage because of a system, software, or technical item there. Natural disasters are a whole different item that we have to plan for. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
But the system you choose should dovetail with your...
Absolutely. And that, and that is actually one of the reasons why we felt comfortable with a system that's being used by other emergency operations in much larger communities, that they're already going through it as well, that if we have an issue, we already know what, you know, somebody else may have at the same time or have something going on, so we can dovetail together in a regionalized.
Councilor Bowden?
I just wanted to elaborate on the, the quality. I mean, most of the providers out there, as far as your HostVoice over IP would be, it's called 59s, 99.999% quality, uptime, service. There's no what's called latency jitter, there's packet loss when you're, when you're talking. So that I imagine, I know is in their contract. If you use Comcast for your home phone, you're already using HostVoice. So that's another piece of it. I guess what happens if the one 50 by 50 circuit is lost? Bearing, is that DIA connectivity, or is there backup?
We, we could use...
It's not raining.
We could use Comcast as a backup, and that was one thing Firstlight looked at, was say, "Keep that Comcast circuit there, use that as your backup." $120, $130 a month, just sitting there doing nothing all the time. But if you do have an outage, it would be nice to have that, sure. Something worth looking at.
Councilor Cast?
Can you speak to another topic, which is sort of the upgrade, continuous upgrade path? Which I understand in cloud is a lot more, can be a lot more frequent and continuous, but costs around that?
That's, one of the nice parts is, they build in the upgrades, their own costs. So if there's new features being released, they test them in their labs, they run up to a small beta group of customers that want to be on the bleeding edge all the time. They bless it, say, "This looks great," and they load it up to everybody. So not only do you get a phone system, it's a phone system that's constantly sort of upgrading.
So I see the new phones is one line item, and phone replacement is another. They're both listed as included, but does that include, you know, as the, as the technology changes over time? So I'm like looking out, the system you just are talking about, you've had for 10 years, and it's reached its end of life, right? In terms of viability, technology-wise. So now, if we talk about moving to cloud in this plan, you know, how far out do you, do you anticipate that would go, you know?
This is a three-year contract, so everything's covered in the three-year contract. If a phone breaks in that three-year contract, they have to give us another phone for free. As the contract goes up for renewal, I imagine we would look at another renewal window, say, three years, however many years. And they get to a point where they say, "Yeah, we don't support those phones anymore. We have to swap out all those phones." And we would come to that discussion, I guess, when that discussion comes up. Either they give them to us for free again, or they pay some sort of a charge. Can't really tell, honestly, how that would work out.
Thank you.
Councilor Weinstein?
First, I just want to say that I also don't know much about phone systems, since I've appreciated all the thoughtful questions and the conversation that we've had so far. But my question is about the, how we can work with the school. And I understand they have a different system now, and I'm just curious where they're at in their phone system, like...
So, this started probably, three years ago, actually, of us looking to upgrade our phone system. And our initial wish was to upgrade with the school. Even before I got here, there was a brief MRI study before that said, "One of the strange things is that we have to dial an outside line to call another department that's in the building." And so we were interested in upgrading the system. Talked to the superintendent at the time, said, "If you know, if you upgrade your system, please include us, we'd love to be on it." Let's do one big system. Walked in the superintendent's office, probably two months later, and there's a new phone system on the desk. So we tried. This system is capable of being expanded for the school. I don't see them switching tomorrow because they just got a new system. However, they, we've had discussions that, yes, when they're ready, that we'll be able to do the same thing and expand on to it. So we are more than willing to work with them, and arms are open to do so.
I can also add that the new system actually will connect into their existing system that we have. So if Steve wants to call, listening to, he'll be able to do it with just four digits, instead of actually having to call an office number. That was one of the questions when I met, when Doug and I met with them, was can we tie into the existing system? Especially in this building, I mean, my office, my phone's a town-side office, but I also work at the school side, too. Kind of, kind of across the hall. So that was one of the questions, and they said that, that for them is not a problem at all. It's actually something that they can jump on, as far as...
I guess my only comment, and I'm not sure there's a question here, but I, I think, given what I've heard today, I don't have much experience with, with these kind of large installations for phone systems. So given what I've heard, it's, it's good to have somebody with reliability and experience in this space, that's with municipalities. But in the future, we'd like to, you know, you always like to have an active bid process. You like to know when, when you can bid. So it wasn't clear to me that there are many other, many of the other cities and towns in the area are using any other hosted service at this point, or does, does Bayring kind of have that market cornered temporarily? Or are there other, other systems being sort of worked with out there? Because that might apply in three years, if there are. In, in an ideal situation, in three years, there may be several companies that are all highly regarded, and then you'd have at least some more competition than we're aware of now.
What you're seeing really is, it's just the, it's the continuation of relationships that municipalities have had with Bayring, Firstlight. They came in probably mid to late 90s as an alternative to Ma Bell. And municipalities worked with them, got them stabilized, especially for emergency operations. And this is, when the proposals went out, they were, said, "Look, our proposal now is a cloud-based versus what we used to provide." So the, the relationship between most municipalities in the area with Bayring has been for a while. I think what the difference is, is how fast are they implementing? As you can see, City of Salamsworth is doing PD first versus the system-wide. I don't know if it's because they, I mean, this police station's pretty new, so I don't see why they would need a brand-new system. But versus us, we're system-wide, we need a new system. So I think that's, that's the continuation to the Bayring situation. And you're right, in three years, I'm anticipating that there'd be not many more companies doing this, especially around here and for municipalities.
There are.
Yeah. Well, I, I would say even more.
I promise you there, right now.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying that with, from our responses, we didn't receive those.
I think, I see no more comments. Perhaps we can go to a vote now.
Councilor Burns?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Cast?
Aye.
Councilor Bowden?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is the nomination. And we're considering the nomination of Gary Levy to be on the Economic Development Committee, with a term expiring March of 2019. Personally speaking, happy to see his application come in. I've been very involved with that committee for a long time. Any other comments about the nomination? Oh, first, could I have a motion for the, to approve Gary Levy for this role?
Second.
Now any comments? Call the roll.
Councilor Burns?
Aye.
Councilor Thompson?
Aye.
Councilor Cast?
Aye.
Councilor Bowden?
Aye.
Councilor Weinstein?
Aye.
Councilor Pike?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Okay, and now we have several resolutions to be read in the first reading. First one is Resolution 2718-1. First one of the new fiscal year. Authorization to purchase 2017 Ford 250 pickup for the sewer department. Whereas Auto Excellence recommends sewer truck number 13 be replaced. Whereas the sewer department has set aside monies into a capital reserve account for truck replacement. Whereas the trucks are scheduled to be replaced every 12 years. Whereas truck number 13 has been in the fleet for 13 years. Whereas the sewer department has followed the purchasing policy and received state bid from Capone Ford. Whereas the state bid price from Capone Ford for a new 2017 Ford 250 pickup is $28,978. Now therefore be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does authorize the sewer department to purchase a new 2017 Ford 250 pickup from Capone Ford for the sum of $28,978. And the next resolution is 201718-02. Creation of an Energy and Environment Advisory Committee. Whereas the town of Newmarket and its residents are mindful of the town's environment. And whereas the town council believes that a committee be created to advise the town council and other committees and boards on best practices as it relates to energy and the environment. That needs to be reworded, I think, a little bit. But now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council creates an Energy and Environment Advisory Committee to recommend best practices in the area of municipal buildings, facilities in operation, fuels, vehicles, and transportation. Responsible purchasing, energy sources, air quality, and climate changes. The committee shall include policies that the town has already adopted, identifies and recommends voluntary action, projects and programs to the citizens of Newmarket, and recommends actions, projects, and programs to the town council for funding. And further be it resolved by that the membership of the committee shall be as follows. One member of the town council, one member of the conservation commission, one member of the planning board, four members at large. And this is sponsored by Councilor Tony Weinstein and Councilor Gretchen Cast.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I would recommend that the next resolution be read by title when we do its length.
Sounds like a good idea.
After I have an explanation on something as well.
Okay. Resolution 2718-03. Issuing 10.34 million in bonds and notes for the wastewater treatment... facility upgrade.
I just wanted to, traditionally, we do not submit resolutions that have blanks or not the backup material. In discussion with bond council, the rates and figures for this will fluctuate the next time when we set the packet. So we didn't include that, because the, the numbers will change. At the next meeting, I will ask for an amendment to put in the dated, and if there's any numbers that change. So I just want to let the council be aware, that's why there wasn't the backup on this one.
Okay. Thank you. Resolution 2017 18-4, Amending Cable Franchise Agreement with Comcast Maine, New Hampshire for a five-year extension. Whereas the town of Newmarket has been entered into a franchise agreement with Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire Incorporated to operate cable television system in the town, and whereas the town and Comcast believe that a five-year extension with two amendments to the current agreement is beneficial to both entities, and now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into a five-year extension of the current cable franchise agreement with Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire Incorporated with the following amendments. First, Section 2.2 term is deleted and a new Section 2.2 inserted. Therefore, the term of this non-exclusive renewal franchise shall be for a period of 13 years and shall commence on November 4, 2009, following the expiration of the current franchise, and it shall expire at midnight on November 3, 2022. Second, Sections 2.6 D and E, pole and conduit attachment rights are deleted and nothing is inserted in their place. In all other aspects, the renewal cable television franchise agreement is not amended and remains in full effect.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just so the council is aware that this requires a public hearing, and it'll be at the next meeting. Legal counsel will be here to explain the franchise agreement. And is there any questions for the public?
Right. Okay. Next item, is there any correspondence to the town councillor?
No.
None? And is there any closing comments by town councillors? I see none. And with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
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 Thanks.